And everyone thinks science or electronic equipment. Do not just, no disruptive behavior or, or outburst will be tolerated and rather to subject to injection and possible prostitution. La punta de consignio de las ciudades de Socorro está por empezar. Cada ayer es favor de quitarse las cachuchas holgeras y todos favor de poner el silencio en todo equipo electrónico. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento prepolicial o redundoso. A quien no se siga esta reglas, se le sacará y puede ser difunto.
Six o'clock, the meeting is now called to order. Mr. Gonzalez, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the good and evil of the great and evil world.
Item number three, establishment of court.
Rene Rodriguez.
Here.
Cesar Nevares.
Here.
Will Suran.
Here.
Mayor Elian Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia Lo.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Item number four, public comment.
Our first speaker is Friends Philhaber.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I own a property on North Loop. There is a development on North Loop in front of us called Leonor. We've been there for twenty years. We had access, egress and egress, up until a couple of months ago, they disappeared. The disappearance of that egress and egress is an illegal action. One of the few jobs that the city has to protect landowners here in Socorro is to make sure that you don't landlock a property that's already landlocked. If you approve any development, one of the first things that you, the city, should make sure that your people verify that the egress and egress has been done properly and that you don't make a situation worse. Um, we monitored this for many years to make sure that the city was doing the right thing, and it was being done right, but all of a sudden, they try to forget everything that was already done and filed with the city and allowed the developer to develop without giving us access to North Loop. The only other access we have is a federal alley that we've been told many times, we cannot use that, that is not, we could use it, but it's not gonna be allowed for us to use that as a, as a negress or ingress or egress. The cost to defend something that's wrong is very high. I can assure you that people from Texas A&amp;M and our experts in landlocked situations have already counseled and told us that what was done here was incorrect. It was not done properly, and they wouldn't know why a council would vote to allow a developer to landlock all of the owners of the property abutting the new development, knowing that the only thing you need to have in there is access to North Loop for us to get out. And then for someone to come back and say, oh, no, let's go ahead and landlock them. It's just not right. You have just made a decision to not allow the banks to finance any of these people's homes on these properties that are landlocked, because banks don't finance landlocked properties. You've just lowered the value of the property tremendously to assist somebody that's not the actual owners and taxpayers of the city of Socorro. But more importantly, we are for, and will always be for, new development, but there's a right way that respects the owners and the developers, and you will have a normal and a logical growth without affecting the values of certain people. I ask that you ask these developers and ask the city, uh, engineers to look at this, to identify what went wrong and to correct it. It's easy to correct right now, it's very expensive to correct legally. You don't wanna go the legal route, it's a very expensive route. From the analysis, it's already been done from Texas A&amp;M and based on law, something was done wrong here. And it's still easy to correct, we can make the choice to correct. If you allow anyone to dig their heels and move forward, it's gonna be very costly for the city of Socorro. Thank you.
Ellen Philhaber.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Um, to follow up, uh, I'd like to give a little history. Um, previously, when Mr. Leone was, uh, in charge of the planning and the permitting, uh, he was very proactive in assisting us in ensuring that the previous developer provide access to every single one of the lots that would otherwise be landlocked by this subdivision. We took advantage of his help, uh, we hired the appropriate, uh, engineering firms, and we recorded these easements at the county, and, uh, uh, at that point, we were told for sure, uh, you're not gonna be landlocked. Uh, I provided, uh, a copy of this, uh, of these documents to Job, we met with him, uh, yesterday, and I think the important thing is, is that there's a technicality that, um, the previous easements that were given to each one of these property owners by this new development, uh, somehow or other, uh, the understanding is that because that developer didn't subdivide and go ahead and proceed with his plan, that all that gets wiped out and that a new developer can now come in and block access to each one of these, uh, uh, properties. Um, we looked at the plan as it is right now, there is a stubout very far away from our property, and there's gonna be four or five property owners that will not have access to that proposed stubout. And so, there would have to be a giving away of property in order to build a, uh, road for access on our side of the canal, uh, when, in fact, the previous development had already identified a legal access. So, um, I think this is contrary to the city's goal to, A, avoid creating colonias, and B, on the financial side, why would you not want to make, uh, these lands, which are gonna be more valuable, being not landlocked? You know, why wouldn't the city want us to have a legal access to grow the tax base? It's sustainable, it's right next to a person that's already developing, so, all the pluses are, make sense, these negatives, they don't make any sense. I, I hope it's just an oversight and that we're at a good point to get it fixed right now, because, right now, it's a relatively easy fix, uh, 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 go back to the easements that were previously granted to us.
So, your time is up.
Thank you very much, I thank you for your consideration.
Tomas Gandarilla. Señor Gandarilla tiene tres minutos.
Señores del Consilio, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Tomás Gandarilla, vivo en once dos cero uno ranking, y mi problema es que los señores de obras públicas me quebraron una ventana de mi casa, y quería ver si es posible que me la puedan reemplazar. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. José Castañón. Señor Castañón tiene tres minutos.
Este, yo vivo allí en la car road, eh, este, mi problema ahí es de que, uh, tengo treinta años viviendo ahí, y ahorita ya me, me bloquearon más mis salidas, y para salir allí es imposible, para salir por el lado del drenaje, so, yo tengo que salir a la North Loop, de cuando están las lluvias, cuando no hay lluvia, no hay problema, porque sale uno por donde haya modo de salir, pero este, es un problema tan drástico que hay una emergencia para, o ambulancia, lo que sea, no podemos, tenemos que sacar al enfermo en nuestro carro a la North Loop. Eso es un problema grande. Entonces, uh, yo pienso que hay que tomar en consideración todo eso, cuando ahorita están los bocacalles, dos bocacalles que salen al orilla de la car road, que esas pueden ponerse puentes para salir, pero no sé si los van a poner. Entonces eso, uh, creo que todos lo estamos sufriendo ahí en el neighborhood. Y eso es todo lo que tengo, uh, hay otros problemas a la mejor de mantenimiento de canales y todo eso que se necesita hacer address para tener realmente...
No más para aclarar, que, cómo se deletrea el, el nombre de la calle, por favor?
Es C-A-R-R, Eloya Road, R.
Gracias.
Oh, Car Road, uh...
Gracias.
Okay. Es todo por lo que tengo yo de estar aquí.
Gracias.
Cristina Ibarra. Ms. Ibarra, you have three minutes.
Huh?
You have three minutes?
I live in Grijalva Road. I'm talking about East Lake, all that new development. Last night, we came to a meeting, we were, the first meeting we came, they didn't tell us nothing about apartments, now they're telling us, we're getting apartments in there, we're getting a park, but the big park is gonna be inside the apartments. And apparently, everybody will be able to go to that park. Now, our question is, you, I know, and everybody else that lived there in Grijalva Gardens, once those apartments go up, the people in there, they're gonna, apparently, they said Socorro and them have an agreement, that they're gonna take care of, the apartment complex manager is gonna take care of half of the maintenance, and Socorro Parks and Recreation is gonna take the other part. But once those apartments go up and the park goes up, we know, those people are not gonna like for us to go into their apartment complexes or into the park, 'cause the park is gonna be built within the apartments. Now, we told that all those trucks, that are carrying trucks, dirt trucks, the heavy ones, they were gonna be polluting and that they were gonna be taken care of. It's not being taken care of, 'cause they've been working out there, and nothing but dust every day, every day. And we were told that the big trucks were not gonna be using Grijalva Road, and they are using Grijalva Road. So, you know, when you guys sent us the first letter to come to the meeting, we came and told us, what do you think about the development? Well, it's great, yeah, but you didn't tell us what was going on. We want to, when we come to these meetings, they should tell us, well, this, last night they showed us phase one, they should tell us, right here, it's gonna go this and this, but they just come and see the map, and then the land developers, they all just see the maps. We don't get to see nothing. And I don't think that's fair. 'Cause we're gonna be connected right back, my backyard is to where all that development is being done. Thank you.
Wait, wait, I'm not gonna, I'm just, she said that she went to a meeting. Yesterday?
There was a meeting last night. We came, Tuesday.
Okay, Tuesday, okay, 'cause I was thinking yesterday.
Well, it's...
Tuesday, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Miriam Cruz. Ms. Cruz, you have three minutes.
Someone left their agenda up here. Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I, I, I wanna clarify, 'cause I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting too on Tuesday, and, and so, part of the issue that happens here and, and happens there is that if I have my laptop and I'm looking at the backup agenda, I'm able to blow it up, I'm able to maneuver it. Um, some individuals may not have a phone or a laptop, or they might not know how to get to the backup material, which ha, again, applies to these meetings and those. And so, if we're not being provided with a, a copy of the backup, like, very, uh, large amount of paper that you have right now, um, excuse me, then people aren't able to break, see what it is that we're looking at. In this case, I know that there was part of it that wasn't in the backup. Usually, it is, it wasn't at that point. And so, it's hard, like I've said before, before even public hearings, for someone to speak up and say something when they don't know, they can't see, and they don't know what it is that they publicly could speak about. It doesn't make sense that we're having a public hearing, and then we talk about it afterwards, after the public hearing has been closed. And so, I think that's part of the issue, and I, and, and she's right, it's not fair. It's not fair that they don't get a chance to speak on something, because, you know, in the meeting, the Public, uh, the Public and Zoning Commissioners got to see the map up there, and it wasn't shown, um, to the public, which maybe brings up, uh, an issue of, uh, Open Meetings Act. Um, maybe. I just wanted to clarify that. I wanted to, uh, thank, like I do a lot of times, the staff for their hard work, for always answering the phones, I appreciate, um, the help and the quickness, um, but one of the issues that I had this week was that a cat got run over on Stockyard. The speed limit is twenty-five. Someone should be able to stop where their dog or a cat passes in front of them, going twenty-five miles an hour. Now, we're gonna have issues of dogs and cats getting run over. Now, you might say, well, maybe that's an issue of stray cats and dogs. Well, I say it's an issue still of speeding. It's still an issue of eighteen-wheelers passing that street, even though we have signs up that say that they shouldn't be passing down that street. And the biggest problem, again, for two years now, maybe three years now, I should look back, they continue to go forty, fifty miles an hour, these eighteen-wheelers, down this neighborhood, and it's really frustrating. It's really frustrating, 'cause it hasn't, I know that there have been efforts by the city to help address it, I know that there's a traffic officer, I know that they, they've been stationed out there a few times, but, um, I don't know when you're gonna pay attention. I don't, I don't want there to be an accident, a horrible accident, for us to then pay attention.
Ms. Cruz, your time is up. Margaret Jarvis. Ms. Jaime, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, I'm also about the property that's on North Loop, the new development, and I have a few concerns besides no access. I have a grandson that lives with me, and he has had seizures, he just had a seizure last week. The ambulance was, usually would go through that development, 'cause there was a right-of-way for a lot of the people who lived there, and all the right-of-ways were blocked. The ambulance took a long time to get to my house to attend my grandson. For now, the development is going on, but we need something, I need something now, not till then. My grandson was at the Children's Hospital this Sunday, he had seven seizures. I need, we need something, my brother lives in my property, he has cancer, and, uh, we have also called the ambulance, but it's ridiculous, 'cause when we used to take the road through the development, we went there when it was dry, because it's a lot of clay, and you know how clay is, you slip and slide. Then we went through the canal when it's wet, because it's sand and sand compacts, but there's holes where people get stuck, or, you know, young teenagers doing whatever they do, and we have a big problem there, it's not, it's not a minor problem, we need something like now. You need to, uh, uh, give us something, uh, Huerta's mom is an older lady, and, you know, it's ridiculous. I believe that the people are first, the, the canal people work for us, we pay the taxes. The city works for us, we pay our taxes, and we comply. So I think the city needs to comply with us. The next thing is, uh, the canales. I am the calde for my area, ever since our canal has rerouted, which we gave the okay, thinking that everything was gonna be done right, which they did give the effort, but I think they're not well informed about canales and gopher holes and so on and so on. Ever since I have started irrigating this year, every time I irrigate, there's, uh, busted water somewhere, and we're not supposed to be throwing water away, but it has been a problem. I think those canales need to be cemented, and that's it, because, uh, once all those housing is there, who knows where the water's going? Gopher hole, gophers are a problem, and we have tons of gophers. The other thing I wanted to address was, uh, the school and the road. Rojas, my grandkids go, go to Roja School, it is full in capacity, most of the schools are full in capacity. We are getting housing there, we also getting a large housing across the street...
Ms. Jaime, your time is up.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, we need something before the housing gets there. Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers. Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Will Suran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lo.
Yes.
Item number ten, public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, amending ordinance number two thirty-five to modify procedures and charges for public records and information provided by the city of Socorro. Six twenty, public hearing is now open.
I had more notes last time, since it was in the agenda last time, um, but I'll say two things. One, I think in an effort for transparency, there should be a lot of more documents online, without people having to request them on public rec, by public records requests. Um, electronic form is, is very, very cheap, yes, maybe, um, storage, uh, can be expensive, uh, and the internet can be expensive, but, um, electronic form is, is very, very cheap, and so, I, I would hope that, whether it's in this or in a different ordinance, that the city move forward to start publishing things like, um, um, all of the backup agenda that you might get at a meeting after the fact, right? Things that are presented to you guys at meetings, but where it wasn't uploaded, um, onto the agenda beforehand. Um, things like, um, dates and, and, uh, positions that, uh, city council members and commissioners, how long they've been, uh, on commissions, or how long they've been on the city, um, and when their term expires and who appointed them. I think those would be important things that people should have free access to, public access to, without them being, um, uh, having to be requested by, uh, a public records request. And so, again, I don't know if that's included in this ordinance or in a different one, um, but I believe that we should continue to move forward with transparency, which is something that, um, one of the ex-mayors, Mayor Ruiz, was a big fan of. Thank you.
Just had one last thing to mention that I, if you could look at the development previously, when Mr. Leone was here, and what was approved...
Sir, right now, we're in public hearing, so you can only talk about item number ten.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So, I would be able to talk to item number fifteen when you get to that item?
Did you sign up for that item?
Yes, he did.
Yes.
Okay, we'll call you up when that item gets up. Thank you, sir. Six twenty-three, public hearing is now closed. Item number eleven, second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, amending ordinance number two thirty-five to modify procedures and charges for public records and information provided by the city of Socorro.
Make a motion to approve. Second. Mr. Meany, may I have a, I have a question real quick?
Yes.
On the, I guess it's the third page? Let me see. It's the cover, second, third, have a third, third page on the back, well, actually, under section four, number two, where it says, um, you have, yes, in red, it's, it's, uh, stricken, where it says, until the request responds to the city in writing or in form, or in the form in which it is available. What does that mean? I, I, that's...
So essentially, yes, sir, so Mike Meany, I'm the city planner, uh, for the city of Socorro, so essentially, is that what we're doing is that we're bringing up to speed the requirements under the Attorney General as it pertains to public information as is requested. What that reads is that in the fashion that we have the information that is requested, so if somebody says, I would like a map of eight, and if the city does have map of eight, we provide it in the form that we have it.
Aye.
We don't have to invent or, or produce it, some, some document that we don't have.
Oh, aye, aye, okay, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Ellos?
And, and to go back to, uh, what Ms. Miriam just said about, uh, publishing, don't we publish as much as we can online? Don't we have that already, online? As far as how they were elected, who elected them, that was one of the subjects that she brought up.
No, no, not that, she was asking about the documentation.
No, um...
No, no, you're, that was before, right now, she was talking about documentation.
Item ten? She, she got up on item ten. Yes.
So, I think if I may, th, this item deals when the public is requesting information from the municipality, so essentially, is that, as I understand it, there was a question about the commissioners and the tenure of the commissioners, I, I think that may be separate?
Yeah, I wouldn't try to address that, I have a number of, we're not supposed to do it. Item, something related to the disordinance, yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, these, these, um, fees are, um, commensurate with others, other municipalities as well, or?
So essentially, the Attorney General of Texas prescribes the fees that you see before you.
Okay.
So we had the legal team reviewed it, I reviewed it for consistency, and I also compared them, uh, with another city, just to make sure. So what you see there is consistent.
Thank you.
This valley is government-led, and they charge to recover their costs, the cost of anger, of the record, of the thousands of people, and, like, guilty presenting the very status of the cost of their life at one point, identical from the disordinance and stuff, the child endangerment, cutting, and saying, we're gonna accept it, we're most uniform, we think this is the general area for recovery of costs.
Thank you.
And this reflects...
Mayor, we have a speaker? Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Will Suran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lo.
Yes.
Item number twelve, public hearing of an ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to regulate subdivisions and include requirements for master planning, subdivisions and traffic impact analysis requirements.
Motion to...
Six twenty-seven, public hearing is now open.
Sorry.
I just wanna reiterate, uh, what I said last time for this agenda item, um, that I'm really happy that the city is moving forward, uh, to finally, um, put this into effect. Uh, I just wish it could have been done two years ago, but thanks.
Six twenty-eight, public hearing is now closed. Item number thirteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to regulate subdivisions and include requirements for master planning, subdivisions and traffic impact analysis requirements.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Good evening, Mike Meany, again with the city of Socorro. What is before you is a update of our requirements as it relates to subdivision. So during my tenure here, there was, uh, an examination of the practices of planning and zoning, and some of the requirements that we had in our current, or the lack of requirements... or the lack of requirements in our zoning ordinances. So for example, whenever there is a pond that was built, there really wasn't a requirement for a developer to come in and build a opelic wall, or a rock wall, for many reasons, to include the addition of sidewalks. What this ordinance does, as one of the functionalities of it, is that it requires a developer to do that. Along with that is that, whenever there's a development that comes in, we also now will require a traffic impact analysis. And these TIA's, that we call them, they're done by the professional engineers of the set developer. We review them with consistency, with Tech dot, or anybody else that abuts their properties, to ensure that the demand that is being generated from that area to another area is consistent. So these are the two biggest themes that I heard when we're redeveloping this, but of course, it's a little bit more encompassing as well.
Ms. Turan?
Is there anything in here that's gonna be protecting the people that are landlocked? Like, we've been hearing tonight about how they're landlocked, and this is... Is there anything in there to protect them?
I don't recall that, when it comes to the recording of plats, that there is a certain protection for abutting homeowners or property owners. I think we can go back and ask legal if that's permissible here. What it is, is that when somebody is gonna record a plat and ultimately becomes a subdivision, there's a process to get there. But if you all want me to go back and look at some type of protection or awareness, what I can tell you as part of the process is that when a new developer, or a developer comes in and there's a request for zoning, for example, we now require them to actually put a posting, like the City of El Paso. City of El Paso has a sign, they have it up for thirty, sixty days, whatever it is, informing the entire public in English and in Spanish that that property's gonna be rezoned. So we're kinda taking best practices from other municipalities and incorporating it as part of the master planning ordinance.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I tend to agree with, I tend to agree with Mr. Turan in terms of the landlock situation, whether it's this issue before us or any other issue. I think that, just like we require developers to do their due diligence with rights of way, or easements, or anything like that, I think that that could also be part of their responsibility to make sure that there are no existing landlock situations in abutting area, because they're still responsible for the ingress and egress of the subdivision. So that would go hand in hand, in my view, with making sure that there are no properties that are landlocked in the vicinity.
You have, if you're, I would say, be cautious about trying to use this as a remedy for that.
Okay.
It's almost a different issue. There is an entire body of law that addresses connectivity and how to, how to lie in what circumstances, being sure if you're property owner, is not that law. I don't expect to see anything specific about that in your subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
Because state law already controls that. There is an opelic that is reflected of it in the subdivision ordinance. Like a preference for more connectivity, not less connectivity. But it comes about a direct connection, saying, "I want, I want our subdivision ordinance", which is really procedural, to provide protections against landlocked properties. And sort of what's saying, "Well, I want our nutritional guidelines to provide for maximization of economic growth." Well, now, I don't know where I can put it. There are lots of other principles, lots of things you can do to provide for economic growth, and those exist separate and apart from your nutritional guidelines. Same thing is here, there's lots of other things that you can do to provide for protections against landlocked properties that have to do with procedural requirements of your subdivision ordinance.
All right. So I guess we can...
Mr. Rodriguez?
The, the, this, this that we're proposing today has been in the works for three and a half years. If we go back two years ago, two years ago to today, there has been three individuals sitting in that position, okay? That was my biggest pet peeve, that I've always said, is that this should have been done three and a half years ago, four years ago. I've been working hard. I have came to us in council with a video of all of the stuff that is going to be in this. And I'm glad that Mr. Medina came and looked at what we decided as a whole, when we brought these issues, we all agreed upon them, and he also looked to see what else needed to be done. So now, it's encompassing, I like it. I just want people to know that this has been in the works forever. Unfortunately, it hasn't come to us, because, like I said, two years ago, there has been three, up today, has been three individuals that were in that position. So at no fault of ours, is it that we're taking a lot of time to get this done. It has, because there has been three individuals that were been there. And hopefully, that individual doesn't, stays here, because he's doing a great job. And we can see it in the ordinances. He saw that what we, we said we wanted, he also said, "Well, we can include this and that, so that it'll be better for our constituents as a whole." So I think that that needs to be said.
No, I agree.
So, that's why it took forever, at no fault of ours, or, or Mr. Medina, so, and our staff.
No, I agree, and so I guess if we can't cover that issue here, I guess departmentally, you all can start looking into that issue.
I believe, sir, with the, with the direction to the city manager, we can come back and provide some type of training as it pertains to properties that are affected by landlots.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have a speaker? Miriam Cruz?
I think I just got my answer from Mr. Terrazas, but I believe that this, this, this item was tabled last time because there was going to be a, an addition made about parks. And I don't see that in here, and so I just want to confirm, if Mr. Medina will, that that isn't in here, but that it won't be included at a later time. And I'm assuming that we're producing this now, so that there's no longer any delay? I don't know, but I believe that that was the reasoning why this was tabled last time. I just want to confirm that the parks stuff is still happening and is going to be brought, thanks.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez?
Yes.
Item number fourteen. Discussion and action regarding RFQ nineteen dash zero five, professional services for architectural rehabilitation design services for the Rio Vista Community Center, including awarding the contract or identifying finalists and calling for additional information from them.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. We're excited to report that, for the first time ever in our Rio Vista Capital project, we had nationwide attention to our RFQ. We had tons of firms from all over the country who are really interested in rehabbing our library. And we had so much input from the National Trust, our grants coordinator, city manager, and city planner. So what we're proposing is to go ahead and award the bid to the top four placement, and then ask them to do a presentation with pricing to city council and staff in order to make a determination.
Mr. Perez?
You said the top four?
The top four. There was a very close call in the scoring in your backup, you can see that there was ties. So we went with the top four. Two of them are local, and two of, one of them is in the state of Texas, and one of them is out of the state of Texas.
So in reality, there's three from Texas and one outside of Texas?
Yes, but we did want to make the distinction that two were local.
Yes, I know. Okay. Well, we already made a motion.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez?
Yes.
Good.
Item number fifteen. Discussion and action on the final plat approval for the Leonora Estates Unit One Replat A, being all Pinecrest Estates Unit One Replat A and Leonora Estates Unit One amending plat. Ms. Rodriguez?
Can I ask Ms. Turan to a question? Was this the item agenda that the gentleman, what we came up to here in public, and?
Fifteen.
Yes, I've had several speakers, it was mayor.
Okay.
And I've been visiting with your administration about it, the city planning. I would ask you, council, to postpone this to the next meeting. There is, an issue has come up, we identified an issue in the release of the survey. I don't want to characterize it, to sound prejudiced or not prejudiced. There's an issue, I think the survey needs to be addressed. I don't want to ask, I just, for my unit, to do it, and I try to figure out why it is. There is an actuary of state, state, but your staff can do that, you know?
Okay. So I'll make the motion to postpone till the next, following meeting.
Second. Where's the conference speaker? Francis Feldhopper?
Thank you for doing what, I think I know what you saw on the, and I think it's a very good idea that it's analyzed. What's most important, we take a look at is easements were given, we paid for them, they were given to us. By law, you can't take that away. The second thing is, we got advice, legal advice, from Texas A&amp;M. El Paso has a lot of case law when it comes to landlocked properties because of the colonias. The colonias were a very big problem, because we in El Paso did not, did not prepare for this type of development, and we had this type of development, this problem. I think a lot of these issues have been addressed, I'd like for you to go over them. We do have the opportunity to correct them, and I plead with you to correct them, so that we don't have to go any further. I thank you, mayor, and council leaders, thank you.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez?
Yes.
Okay. Can I make a motion to reconsider item number fourteen? Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez?
Yes.
Right, I just... Just clarity, yes, so I'll make the motion to approve the four finalists. The four, the four top finalists, as recommended by Ms. Turan. Second.
Second. Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez?
Yes.
Item number sixteen. Discussion and action to authorize the city manager or her designate to sign the final acceptance letter for the Nuevo Hueco Tanks roadway.
Motion to approve, discussion? Second.
Mike Medina, city planner. As you all previously have been made aware, is that there was a series of contracts that were signed by the city to partner with the RMA for the construction and ultimately the maintenance of said roadway. So the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority has sent draft documentation, we're waiting for the official letter from their executive director, but essentially, is that the RMA has notified us that the roadway is now ready to be turned over to the city. So this item before you is to authorize the city manager or the designate to sign on behalf of the city for the maintenance.
Mr. Perez?
Now, this is gonna sound like a silly question, but it really isn't. Can we have, if it's going to be turned over to us, can we ask the state to do one final maintenance of the street in terms of landscaping and all those kinds of things?
So essentially, what staff did is that we had two walkthroughs with the RMA's representative, and so this punch list, as we called it, we identified things that were structurally not acceptable by the city. Over a series of weeks, they have fixed those. And so, in terms of any landscaping, I think that if it's maintenance, like to clean it up, I think we can certainly make that request. If we want additional landscaping or things of that nature that were not part of the contract, I don't know that the RMA would be open to that.
No, and that's my only, because driving down, you see all these weeds that are growing, and they're gonna turn it over. It's like getting a new car, I'd like to have my car detailed before I get it.
Before we sign under that, yeah.
Ms. Turan?
One, one other thing that I'd like to see changed before we take over is there's a street light, not a street light, but a light in the middle of a road on Nuevo Hueco Tanks. I mean, they have it right in the middle of where a road's gonna come out. Can we have them move that before we take it over? Because otherwise, we're gonna be responsible for it.
The developers.
The developers? Right, so essentially, is that, and I do know where you're talking about the area, so there's driveways that the development is going to abut onto the roadway. And so, in this case, whoever's developing that would be required to remove it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the developer.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have a speaker? Miriam Cruz?
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I have two, two questions, two concerns. There is no financial impact posted on the little sheet, the first sheet, on the backup. And I was just wondering if we could, as the public, take what's Exhibit B one, party responsibilities. It lists the city, and there's some numbers on there. Two mil, two thousand, forty-one thousand, ten thousand, and if I scroll down, there's some other numbers. Is that the impact that we can expect for the maintenance that the city will have to do in the next year, ten years, five years? And if not, what might that be, what might that look like? Because if I remember, I believe that this wasn't the plan, we weren't supposed to take this road, right? Thank you.
Ms. Arza? Mayor, the amounts that you're seeing, there is the portion that the city paid in order to build this road, was part of the agreement, which has already been paid.
So I, I think I may have to amend my motion, Mr. Medina, to include the maintenance of the road and prior to it being turned over to the city?
Second. Good call.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez?
Yes.
Item number seventeen. Discussion and action to amend the park's master plan to include the green infrastructure plan from the two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve? Second.
Mike Medina, city planner. This item before you also comes by way of looking at the previous item that you approved, the master planning ordinance. So in discussion with the attorneys, it was discovered that when the park's master plan was developed, there was never an ordinance that tied design standards to the park. Also with that, in my review of the park's master plan, and to include the two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan, one of the opportunities to have recreational trails, or to have shared paths, things of that nature, were never identified in the park's master plan. So essentially, what I'm saying is that there is no connectivity between the comprehensive plan and the park's master plan. Part of the language that is in the master planning ordinance is that the city can allow the developer to do a park, to do a park-pond combination, or a trail system. So a couple of months ago, the grants coordinator came before you, and we adopted a portion of the Paso Norte Health Foundation Master Trail Plan. So we believe that it's probably in the best interest of the city to work with the developers, and where it is appropriate, start developing the trail system. So essentially, what this does is that it incorporates the recommendations and the recognition of the trail system in the park that is called green infrastructure. We bring it down into the park's master plan, and at the next city council meeting, we will bring the design standards for the parks and also for the trails. That will also tie back to the master planning ordinance.
Ms. Mayor? Ms. Ellos?
Getting back to the parks and what we've heard here tonight, hopefully, I can ask this question. Do we have any communities that are sharing apartments and communities that are sharing parks? Or near, near the future? Do we have parks that are sharing with our residents versus the apartments versus the single dwelling?
So essentially, is that when we exact the park requirements, every subdivision should have, as a functionality of the density of the housing, its proportional park. So if you have a very large subdivision, obviously, you're gonna have either a very large park or different parks within the same subdivision. So essentially, is that there could be an opportunity... So, essentially is that there could be an opportunity if in the zoning it is allowed to have mixed use. So, there could be the opportunity that if you build a higher density like apartments, that you could have a co-sharing of the facilities. An example is the school district, so the city of El Paso and some of the school districts have decided to partner in the maintenance of such parks. We can also follow that same practice, uh, in any fashion that the city will like. There are things that we're talking about in terms of providing the water to those parks. The city does pay a very heavy water bill for the parks that we have. So, one of the ideas here is that we're going to talk to the partners that we have for irrigation, and of course the lower belly water district, to bring new ideas on how we can supply water to the parks. So, so essentially is that there could be a well system, there could be an irrigation system to it, uh, but again, is that any direction that we come and we ask for will be presented.
And I, I have a second point to add, I'm sorry. And the second is access. Do they have to go, if, if they are sharing, if we are sharing, I know the, the schools are separate, you know, it's gated, it's for protection of our children when they're at school, I completely understand. But when we have a community that's mixed, um, access to these parks, do they have to go in through, you know, a certain, uh, complex to be able to access these parks? Or is it right next to, um, the complex where people can just enjoy just coming in through, you know, whichever side?
So, essentially whenever there is a, a shared agreement between two bodies, it's open to the public. In the event that a subdivision is built, the developer can elect to have a private park. So, essentially you see that with gated communities, uh, there's some in El Paso. But, but essentially is that a lot of the, the, the state of practice is that the developer comes in, and regardless of the zoning, regardless of the type of development that's there, if the city pays for a public, you know, component to be applied by terms of the monetary value, then it's open to the public. So, for example, is that whenever anybody builds a roadway, it's a public roadway. So, if a cyclist wants to use it, it's a public road. So, it's the same concept. Only where the developer comes in and says, "This is a private park," and so there's a membership, membership fee, things of that. That's kinda like the, the swimming pool that they build at the apartment. If we don't use public funds, then the public can go into it.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And one of the things is that, um, in talking and speaking with Mr. Medina is, it's a good idea to partner up. Uh, one of the reasons is because I've said it here, and I've also said this. We have, Ms. Aranda, how many employees do we have for our parks working?
Well, now we have a total of eighteen because they're combined with public works.
Okay, but before, when they were alone?
Three.
Three, and we had seventeen on our books, which half of those are just dirt and weeds because we can't maintain. Because once again, it costs us a lot of money, and the biggest one is irrigation of these parks. So, one of the things is that I like the partnerships because if we do, then we won't have to carry that big monetary, you know, funding that comes with the irrigation and stuff, or the maintenance of it, because, Ms. Aranda, as you heard, we already combined that department, but back then we didn't. And we only had three for all the parks we had. So, those are the issues that we have. When we did the master, the Parks Master Plan, we did it way back. And what happened is that they came down here and says, "Oh, you guys are, uh, don't have enough parks," but you don't realize that we were in, we were enacted in eighty-five, nobody did anything for years. So, those were county parks, and the city didn't really apply for, for parks. So, now we are, it's very difficult for us to come back to really say, "This is what we wanna do." We're gonna have to look for partnerships, because we can't do it because it's millions upon millions of dollars to bring up a park. And then on top of that, the cost that comes right after when we take up ownership of these parks. I know we're talking about quality of life, but I mean, it's something that it's great to hear that we could partner up and try to see how we can not bring this burden to our taxpayers, but bring him quality of life. So, it's great. So, thank you.
Miriam Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I have a, I have a question. I like the trail system, um, I think it's important, I think it's nice to be able to go through a long walk instead of, you know, circle. But, does that mean then that that would be a replacement to the park? Because what I'm imagining is that most people, when they're building, when they're buying a house, is that they're doing it for their kids, right? They have kids that they want to go take to the little park that has little kids' things to do. And so, this, uh, trail system, I'm looking at the backup, landscaping, it looks nice, um, but will there actually be anything for kids, and, and will there be a requirement that along with the trail, that at the end of the trail, maybe there will be a, a portion of, of what's, one would consider an actual park to be? And, and if not, you know, again, we're, we're creating these homes for people to not be able to enjoy, and, and if, uh, we don't have the resources, then we, we, we find the resources. Because not having the people or not having the money to maintain parks are not reasons to deprive people from parks. Uh, we in Socorro deserve a good quality of life, um, and, and, and we deserve it just like anyone else in any other city. And so, um, I, I just have the question. I, yeah, it looks nice, but I wanna know if it's gonna be a replacement, thanks.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia.
Yes. Item number eighteen, discussion on action on the approval of the interlocal agreement between the city of Socorro and Texas Department of Public Safety to implement the provisions of Texas Transportation Code seven oh six and to authorize the city manager or her designee to execute contract.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is the fail-to-abide program that the defendant gets charged thirty dollars, um, in order for, if they don't show up to court, turns into warrants, so their license cannot get renewed until either they pay the warrant or they go talk to the judge. Uh, out of those thirty dollars that are collected, twenty go to the state of Texas, six go to the vendor, and four dollars come to the city. And it's just, um, the contract term, you know, ended, so we have to come for a renewal to start a new contract.
I have a question.
Ms. Ellos?
Who sets the fees, or how were the set, the fees set?
The state of Texas.
The state of Texas, okay, thank you.
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion on action to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Socorro and Islata del Sur for partnership regarding the ambulance services in the city of Socorro and Islata del Sur.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, so the Islata del Sur, as you all know, October first, we started with our new ambulance service. So, uh, the Islata del Sur had approached us to, well, had approached Elite to get their own service, but due to their volume of calls, they get about five calls a month, which is not impacting, so Elite said, "Why don't we partner up?" Uh, we did meet with Islata del Sur, and they are, um, guaranteeing payment for the calls that are picked up in their, um, property, right, for their residence. However, we do need permission to enter into their land. So, this, there, there would be, to be an agreement between both us and them in order for us to be able to pick up patients.
This is just a formality.
Mr. Turan?
They do have an ambulance on the, are they gonna continue using that ambulance? Or is it going to be eliminated, and then they'll just be using Socorro's?
No, they'll, they'll continue their ambulance service, however, they wanna be, be, be prepared in case they do need our assistance that we're able to go into their property.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to move twenty to executive at the end of.
Break your session.
A regular. Can you say again?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras. Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia.
Yes. Item number twenty-one, discussion on action to renew Delgado Acosta Spencer Linebarger and Perez LLP contract for fines and fees collection services and to authorize the acting city manager or her designee to execute the services agreement and other documents necessary to engage the company.
Make a motion to approve? Second, but I do have a question.
Mayor and Council, I am going to ask to postpone this item. Um, we had a couple of going back and forth with, between the attorneys, and they were not able to make it once we received the response. So, I am going to ask to postpone to October seventeenth meeting, October seventeenth.
Mr. Perez?
I do have a question, uh, on the wording of the item. Why are we saying, why can't we say, why, why are we saying authorize the acting city manager?
Oh, yeah. Because they probably used the wording from a different agenda.
So, then, I think that would have to change?
So, we will change that, yes.
Boom, ring it up, okay, so.
Most, emotion, I resent my motion, a motion to ask postpone?
Second.
Oh, no, that was your.
That was my.
I apologize. I'm, I'm, I'm stepping into your motion, I apologize.
Yeah, I'll, I'll. I'll resent my motion, and the motion will be postponed to the following meeting.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rodriguez.
Second.
Still second.
It's okay.
Rewording.
With the we, rewording.
Rewording.
The we word.
Rewording.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
I heard we worded.
Item number twenty-two, discussion on action to approve Representative Alarch Rene Rodriguez and any other council member to attend TML Region Four meeting in Town of Horizon City, Texas, on November first, two thousand nineteen.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Everybody in the pack.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, this is, this is gonna be in the Town of Horizon, all of us are welcome, you know, like, this will be probably my last hurrah as, uh, the president of TML, uh, Region Number Four. Um, it's, it's.
And for that, we should all go.
Yeah, you know, so, so you guys are more than welcome, um, and our staff as well. So, uh, I'll put it on the agenda, 'cause it's almost.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, discussion on action to authorize Representative Alarch Rodriguez to receive or participate in classes on continuing education programs for the NPO.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, uh, they are, um, matter of fact, yesterday at the T-PAC, we were also told, uh, it's the same thing, Jim, NPO, it's right underneath, it's the same thing. Um, so, um, every year, we have to start with five, uh, hours of education on what we're, like, for transportation, for acquisitions of railway, and so forth and so forth. So, in order to participate in the NPO or a T-PAC, every member has to accumulate five hours. So, last year, um, and the following years that I've been, it's been, I've only incurred one hour that can be transferred to this year, so I'm, I'm short four, and these, these classes only are like fifty dollars, twenty-five dollars, but they come with an hour or two. So, that's what I'm just asking, Council, that, uh, just to, uh, continue, uh, representing the city. And it's very important, because we lost some funding. But.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, discussion on action, discuss, discussion, action, and ratification to approve Representative Rodriguez and any other council members who want to attend the third annual mentorship benefit in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Uh, make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, this, um, um, uh, this is the third annual benefit. What this is, is that, uh, our state representative for District One, the educational board, which is Georgina Perez. Um, this is to give scholarships to our kids, um, for the seniors only, this is a scholarship. And what it is, is that it's like a beneficial, so that the kids can also look at, you know, their, their leaders around their area. Uh, business owners as well as education, uh, educate, uh, my God, can't come up with that word. Educators, um, and, uh, and like ourselves, council people, mayors, uh, city managers will be there in attendance, and this is to mentor them as well, and just to, you know, help the kids, push them in the right direction. This is a benefit, and this, all the proceeds would go to scholarships. And, and for this, 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 so I think this is something that we've all said that we would want to help our community, especially our young kids who are growing up and wanna be future leaders.
Mr. Perez?
So, when do we need to have a resp, now, the five hundred dollars would be paid by the city of us?
By the city.
And that would cover everybody, or is that?
That would cover ten people. So, you can bring your, your spouse and, and staff.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
We're ready?
Ah, ready.
So, oh, oh, excuse me, excuse, Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I need, I need names quick, 'cause tomorrow we need to, we need to send them out, because if we don't, then we're not gonna be able to attend, we need the names, um, and your plus one, so.
Do we have any staff members that would like to attend?
I have an excessive to staff.
No, that's why I said, and staff too.
I mean, I have something on Saturday that I.
No, but our staff is more than welcome too.
I can extend it to the departments, but I, I had it.
How about, um, well, we can bring anybody we want.
Yes.
Okay, great.
So, it's just us plus one, whoever that would be?
Yeah, whoever is one, and then if staff wants to go, it'd be great, because these are kids who, who are gonna go apply for scholarships, these are kids that might want to, like, m- maybe our IT guy, if, I'm just saying that if our IT department wanted to go, they can ask them questions as well. It's gonna be like a, kinda like, uh, students will see what direction they might, so.
Mr. Rodriguez, I would like to attend, I don't have a plus one.
Okay.
But if I could, I would.
Okay, that's fine, we'll just fill up the, we'll just fill up. We'll, we'll go first, and if there, we're missing some seats, let our staff.
Fill them.
Yes.
Okay.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia.
Yes.
I wanna say thank you guys, thank you, this is for our children's future.
Item number twenty-five, discussion on action on charter amendments, section seven, eight, nine, pages twenty-eight through thirty-nine for the two thousand twenty election.
Mayor, can I ask for postponement, because I, I've been, I've, I've been sick the last two weeks, I haven't read.
Make a motion to postpone for into next meeting, please?
Second.
Oh, you did, oh, okay, yeah, yeah, second, second.
Yeah, just because.
No, no, it's fine, it's fine.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I would just like to know if there's an update on the PDF version or the typed-up version of the city charter and ordinances? Um, I just find that to be easier to search for, um, once it's been typed up, and I know that there is typos and all that other stuff that's been working on, so I want, I just wanna know if there's an update on that, thanks.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say something, I can see. I was just gonna say, Ms. Miriam, some of these items, you can direct to Mrs., uh, our city manager, Ms. Aranda, and you can get the answers to them, um, because sometimes we're not equipped to answer or can tell you, but she is, and, and it'd be much easier. I'm sorry. No, I didn't say I wanted the answer.
She was directing it to you.
Well, it would be helpful, but I think you need to get the answer, because these are your questions, and you can direct them to, to the city, uh, to Ms. Aranda, because she can tell you if they're in PDF, not in PDF. she can tell you if they're in PDF, not in PDF, um, we wouldn't be able to tell you that. It's, we have part of our backup.
No, we can't type it up until we know what changes.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras?
That's me, you're very rude, I'll do a meeting with two guys that hate me, not if I hate you. It said against us, or it said something personal with these guys, 'cause.
Ma'am, you can't be ta, ma'am, you can't be talking from the audience, I'm sorry, we're taking the vote.
Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colomilla Robos.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to go into executive?
Motion made?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaras?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.